Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Revere City Council Emergency Meeting to discuss the Mohegan Sun project. And I would like everybody to please rise and salute the flag. And I would ask that everybody please put your cell phones on vibrate or shut them off. I know everybody's important here and they have important calls coming in. So I would like not to be interrupted during this session. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Roll call, members. Counselor Rigo is absent. Counselor Correggio?
Here.
Here. Counselor Gino is absent. Counselor Guanasso?
Here.
Here. Counselor Haas?
Here.
Here. Counselor Penta?
Here.
Here. Counselor Powers?
Here.
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 And Council President Novosinski?
Here.
Here. A quorum is present.
Thank you. And I would like to thank those counselors that made it this morning. This is a very historic moment that we're going to go through today. And it'll probably be the last one for this legislative session before we go into New Year next month. So at this time, I would ask the clerk to read the communication to start the meeting.
Counselor, item number one, communication from Mohegan Sun requesting that the host community election pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 23K, subsection 13 of section 15 be held on February 25th, 2014.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to acknowledge Counselor Rigo in attendance. And what we're going to do this morning, ladies and gentlemen, is we'll have the mayor come up and make his presentation of the host community agreement and discuss the communication in front of us. And I would like to note that after the presentation by the mayor, we will open it up to anybody in the audience who'd like to make a comment, restricting their comments to a very, very short time. If they have any questions, they may refer them to the mayor and he'll maybe refer it to his Economic Development Director, John Festa. Note that Chris Chip Tuttel is here from Suffolk Downs and Peter Schultz is here from Mohegan Sun. I don't know if anybody else is here. I don't see Mitch. Tracy's here. Thank you. Notice Louis Chaloni from 123 is here along with the mayor's economic staff, Frank Stringi, Paul Capisi. Joey D'Ambrosio is here in behalf of Suffolk Downs and Mohegan Sun. Oh, Counselor-elect Steve Marabito is present. Steven, welcome. Brian, our counselor, is here. Nice to see you again. Our manager of the agreement is Brian. We thank him for all his work. So with that, I will invite the mayor to the podium and make his presentation. And I would ask for everybody's attention to the podium and the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And members of the city council, thank you all very much for accommodating us and calling for this special meeting. I know that most of you probably figured your last meeting would have been the last meeting. But, you know, the timing of this, you know, really couldn't be avoided. And so I appreciate the latitude and the opportunity to come here and present this very exciting opportunity for the city of Revere. I know, Mr. President, you had just acknowledged, you know, people that you see here with us here today. But I would also, I think I would be remiss in not mentioning Giorgio Anzoni, our Director of Finance, who was not here with us but played a very, very vital role in these negotiations. So, and I'd also like to acknowledge from CDM Smith, who has just been a great partner to the city in so many different ways. They obviously are handling our consent decree with respect to our water sewer and drainage here in the city. But they also were our traffic engineers as we went through this process and actually have been a great assistance in us as we present this. So Bob Button is here from CDM Smith. I want to thank them for their service as well. So I'll just take, and by the way, we had a press conference that announced the terms of this host community agreement last week. And from what I understand, a lot of people, I know my office received phone calls and emails saying they couldn't hear volume. Apparently, the microphone was not there. So my apologies to any of those members of the general public who did not hear the terms of the host community agreement are some of the words that were spoken by Mitch Addis, CEO of Mohegan Sun. Miles, my chief of staff, is trying to retrieve some of the tape to maybe get it onto the website. But we'll be hearing an awful lot of this. So hopefully, that's just one glitch that we'll get by as we continue to talk about this very important election coming up and the terms of the host community agreement to which people will be responding to and presumably voting on this coming February. So, again, we wouldn't be in this position. I think I'll just take a couple of seconds to talk about where we were and, you know, how we've got to this point. Because I think there's so much confusion. I mean, you know, it's confusing to us sometimes as to everything that's gone on. So I'll just give a quick recap. Obviously, Suffolk Downs, you know, has been very actively seeking a gaming license to continue with thoroughbred racing at the racetrack. There's probably, I can't think of any racetracks, thoroughbred racetracks, that are successful or continue to be successful without some sort of enhanced gaming. So it has been their goal to bring enhanced gaming to Suffolk Downs now for some time. The original plan was to be built in the racetrack, in the clubhouse. And as a result of the city of Revere owning a third or a third of the track sitting on Revere property and the other two-thirds in East Boston, there were two host communities, okay? Back on November 5th, Revere voted yes to support the project and our neighbors in East Boston voted no. That essentially killed that project. Now, there was an option where Revere voted yes and we had within our host community agreement the ability to build on the Revere side, as was clearly stated in the agreement. We had the ability to go to Suffolk Downs and ask that they consider building in Revere only. They immediately went to work on it with all of their architects and engineers and everybody else that would see the viability, see if it was a viable option for them to pursue. And low and behold, we had 51 acres, 41 of which are buildable, that they felt as though would present a viable option to pivot the project from East Boston over to the Revere side of the property. We went before the Gaming Commission to ask them if that was going to be possible, given the terms of our then-host community agreement. After some discussion, they agreed that it was feasible, but only if Revere voters go out once again and vote for the project that will presumably sit on the Revere side of the property only. So that's the stage we're at. The project will work. It is going to be a beautiful billion-dollar development that's going to sit in Revere only. But the caveat to that is that we have to ask our voters one more time to go out and support the project. Now, the other thing that had to happen in order to make this all work is the city had to negotiate a new host community agreement, one that reflects the current terms, the construction all taking place within the city of Revere and obviously all the other, you know, traffic considerations and, you know, everything else that would go along with moving the project from where it was originally slated for and now where it's ultimately going to sit, again, in the Revere side only. So we met and obviously a lot of things that took months and months and months to negotiate, as well as architectural drawings and, you know, to actually put together a plan to build a billion-dollar facility in such a short window has been a strain on everybody. And so we obviously were very, very aggressive, as was Mohegan Sun, in putting together a host community agreement in a really short period of time, maybe two, two and a half to three weeks. And while I'm on that subject, Mohegan Sun now will be the applicant, not Suffolk Downs. So it will be Mohegan Sun that's actually going to be applying for the gaming license. They have leased the property from Suffolk Downs on the Revere side. So Suffolk Downs will continue to operate as a horse track and under the current ownership, but they are leasing property in Revere to Mohegan Sun, who will be the applicant for this project, okay? So what I'd like to do now is to start talking about the host community agreement. As we know, it's going to create jobs, it's going to generate revenues, and it's certainly going to stimulate our local economy. And I'm going to go over some of those ways in which we're going to see all of that happen. We, there are many, many important points to this project. But I know one that many people are concerned with is what kind of revenue stream is this going to generate for the city of Revere? There's no doubt in my mind, this will be by far the best host community agreement that's been negotiated in Massachusetts since the inception of expanded gaming. We're going to have a guaranteed minimum payment of $25 million starting in the first year of operation. It's going to go to $30 million during the first four years. The potential for annual payments, based on their estimates of $1 billion, is going to be $40 million a year. So to put that in perspective, or to try to explain where we get this $40 million number from, studies have shown right along since this gaming legislation was enacted that there is $3.1 billion of gaming dollars that leaves Massachusetts that goes somewhere else on an annual basis. They feel as though that that same $3.1 billion can stay here in Massachusetts. The Boston-based location, there's three regions throughout the state. Three casino licenses will be given out. The Boston one seems to be one that is, will probably be the most lucrative. So you have to assume that at least a third of those gaming dollars will find their way to Region A, which will be where this particular facility will sit. So using that, the estimates that we're using are $1 billion. At $1 billion, the city of Revere will receive $40 million on an annual basis. That's on a one-time payment. That's each and every year. We're going to get payments prior to them opening that are going to total $33 million. Actually, it's going to be $36 million because they're giving us $2 million to go toward the new Harry Delarussue Stadium and $1 million that's going to go toward a new youth center. So we're going to start to collect $9 million on an annual basis. And then, once they open, the minimum payment that we're going to receive is $25 million. But again, if they do $1 billion in the first year, if they're wildly successful in the first year, put that $25 million number aside. We're going to get that $40 million because that's what the agreement is based on. It's based on volume and minimums. So if they had a very, very poor year, one year, they did very poorly, it doesn't matter. We're going to get that minimum of $25 million. And ultimately, as the years go by, the base number will be $30 million. So in addition to that, they're going to be spending $40 to $50 million in infrastructure improvements. They're going to put 2,500 construction workers to work as they build out this project and then ultimately 4,000 employees at the facility once it's built. So 4,000 full-time jobs will be created at its completion. We've allocated some of that revenue stream in different areas. We have found that the Gaming Commission wants to see, at least to some extent, where the money is going to be spent. And this is just, you know, these are just some things that we wanted to address right off the bat. There's going to be $2 million on an annual basis that's going to go to the police department, $2 million on an annual basis that's going to go to the fire department. There's going to be $1 million a year that's going to go to our school department. And Dr. Dakin has indicated that he wanted to look at different things such as extended learning, our ELL issues that we have. There's a lot of issues that he would be able to address that he can't right now under the current set of circumstances and financial constraints that they have. But this $1 million will go a long way for them as well. The other thing that I had talked about with Dr. Dakin was after-school programs and, you know, the possibility of expanding the new community school that we have there. That's really been working quite nicely over at the high school. So all of that is going very, very well. And then we have allocated $1 million for general municipal operating expenses. So let me talk just a minute about some of the transportation improvements. Some of the major improvements will include, obviously, Route 1A. That's going to, we had talked about the flyover, the Boardman Street flyover, and that is still in play. But there are other options that actually, preferred options by Mass DOT, that could make that traffic flow just as good as a flyover, if not better. So these are conversations that are ongoing right now with Mass DOT and Mohegan Sun. And they will, no doubt, go with the better option. And the better option, not saying it's going to be the less expensive option, but whatever option is going to make traffic flow better, that's the option that they're going to use. And they're going to come up with that solution with Mass DOT and obviously our traffic engineers and their traffic engineers. And if anybody has questions regarding the traffic flows or anything like that, obviously Frank Stringi is here and Bob Button is here as well. So, you know, either one of them, I'm sure, can address whatever your concerns may be. We also have the Route 16 interchange that we talked about, how people will be able to go west on Route 16 before hitting Bell Circle and make their way to Route 1 as you go 16 west. This would probably be easier to show on a diagram, but I'm pretty sure you counselors that I'm speaking with anyway understand, you know, where that 16 pickup would be and how it would take you over to Route 1 by Plaza Giro Balde. It's going to eliminate a lot of traffic that would normally go through Bell Circle, down to Brown Circle, and ultimately to Copeland Circle by diverting it to Route 16 and up onto Route 1 down by Plaza Giro Balde. It's going to also allow, by the way, which is a big, for those of you that ever come Route 1 heading south and take the Route 16 exit, but you want to head east on Route 16, you have to go up, you have to take Route 16 and head west and then make a U-turn at that set of lights up by Russo's Tux. You won't have to do that anymore. You come down the ramp, there'll be a set of lights, and you can take a left right there. So you don't have to go and make that big U-turn all the time anymore, which is going to be a big help for a lot of people. We're going to be doing about $3.8 million in Donnelly Square, which includes some utility improvements. So that's a significant upgrade from where we were last time. And then we're going to be spending about $1 million on the North Shore Road, Revere Beach Parkway, Thomasello Drive intersection as well. So, and again, we have built into our agreement that we are going to be able to revisit these transportation issues periodically as they may be necessary. So these are all initial investments that are going to be made by Mohegan Sun. But that doesn't mean that it's necessarily the end of the road. We have it in our agreement that we can go back to the table and look at these transportation issues as time goes along. So to go over now some of the financial terms. I talked about some of the minimums, the $25 million minimum, the $30 million minimum, the $40 million estimates. I'll try to break that down as easily and quickly as I can. In years one through three, the minimum that the city of Revere is going to get is going to be $25 million. The day they open their door, from that point on, for the next 12 months, the minimum the city of Revere will receive is $25 million. As I say, if their numbers go up, then we, you know, we will go up with them. But the lowest we'll ever go is $25 million. After year three, from years four through six, the minimum the city of Revere will ever receive is $28 million. So again, if they do $1 billion in year five, we're going to get $40 million. If they do a half a billion dollars in year five, we're going to get $28 million. So that's always going to be the minimum that we're going to get. Year seven and after, for the remainder of the life of the agreement, is going to be $30 million minimum payment to the city. Now, by all accounts, we feel as though, and again, you know, with any new venture like this, these are uncharted waters for everybody, including Mohegan Sun. You know, it's hard to say what their numbers will be. But, you know, and that's why, quite honestly, it was very important for us to get minimums that we thought made sense for the city of Revere. But we feel that this will be, you know, given the location, the proximity to Logan Airport, the, you know, Boston being a tourist town, a convention town, we really believe, and they believe obviously, that this is going to be a very, very successful project. And we anticipate them hitting their, you know, hitting their billion-dollar mark very early on. So putting it all in perspective, what's the minimum that the city of Revere is going to receive over the 15-year initial license that they're going to receive? The minimum, if everything goes wrong, the minimum that the city of Revere is going to receive is $429 million over the next 15 years. The more realistic number that we're probably going to receive, given the estimates, exceeds $600 million. So just staggering for a city like Revere, when you think about just one project, the types of revenues that this is going to generate. And that's not taken into consideration the offshoot development that we're going to get. I know John Festa would tell you, there are hotel developers, restaurant developers, people coming into the city on a weekly or actually more frequent than that, to talk about different pieces of property throughout the city where they feel as though they want to build a hotel or restaurant, something like that. So it's going to spur an awful, awful lot of development. And I think all of us here would agree, Revere Beach in particular, that two and a half mile stretch is probably the most underutilized stretch of oceanfront, maybe on the entire eastern seaboard. When you think about it, it's America's first public beach and a national historic landmark. I mean, there's so many things that we could be doing down there to make this a world-class city and a world-class beachfront. So now, some of the things, we talked about, you know, all this revenue. So where's all this revenue going to go? Yeah, it's going to go to police, it's going to go to fire, it's going to go. There's a lot of different needs we have. We all know we've got needs down the DPW. One of our biggest calls for service has to do with potholes. It has to do with sidewalks. It has to do with tree removal. It has to do, these are all things that we have to put off while maybe you'll get on next year's list. I know, Bob, when you were mayor, how many times did you have to tell somebody, "I can't do it this year. Maybe I can do it next year." This gives the city the ability to say, when do you, you know, I mean, a more realistic problem that I think I'd have is not being able to find a contractor to do this type of work, you know? So, I mean, we, I think we're going to be in a very, very good position to add, you know, add some much-needed help down the DPW, as well as giving them the necessary resources and tools to be able to, you know, to accomplish their work. I was talking to Jimmy Mercurio on the way into the council chambers. And, you know, we were talking about, I know that, you know, he's very active in Beauchamp in particular with the Beauchamp Improvement Committee that does a great job at, you know, beautifying their neighborhood and things like that. These are projects that are very, very important to me, and I know they're important to you. You're always talking about mitigation and what can we do to clean up this area, clean up that area. This will give us resources to make this city shine, really shine. The other thing it's going to allow me to do, and I couldn't say it during the last agreement because the last agreement didn't have that much flexibility, really. You know, we had the, you know, the upside to get maybe $15 million a year and, you know, maybe a little bit more. So I felt as though I could probably stabilize taxes a little bit, you know, and help out with, you know, maybe the water sewer rates. Maybe we bond for the water meters instead of put it into the water and sewer rates. This time, I can say with certainty, I will be able to stabilize taxes. In fact, I'm quite optimistic. I'll be able to actually, once this is up and running, reduce taxes in the city of Revere because of this project and others that will follow. So, you know, again, a big, big benefit. And that's important to me, to be able to say to every resident in the city, there's something in it for you too. You know, this is, this is one project. And when you think of the magnitude, they're talking 10,000 cars a day. 10,000 cars a day, as I've said before, is equivalent to having a square one mall sitting over at that site. I mean, it's not going to be the disaster that a lot of people are trying to paint it as. It's going to be like as if they built a mall in the middle, instead of the racetrack, they put a mall there. It's, you know, it's just not going to produce the type of traffic that people are thinking. And to, I can tell you this, if they put a square one mall there, we're not going to get $600 million over the next 15 years. I guarantee that. So, and, you know, the other thing is, what are some of the other possibilities if it wasn't a mall? Are we willing to entertain more residential? Is that what we're looking to put there? So again, this eliminates a lot of the what-ifs and creates a lot of upside for the city. Job opportunities. This is one of the things, and, you know, we've talked about this before. When this legislation first passed, this came out of the legislature as an emergency jobs bill. It was to put people to work. Like I said before, 2,500 construction jobs, 4,000 permanent jobs at its conclusion. So in the agreement, this calls for a minimum. These are minimums now, so please don't confuse these with, that's all we're going to get, okay? But these are minimums that we put in our agreement. 10% of all the construction jobs, that's 250 temporary construction jobs over the two or three years of construction, will go to Revere residents. Now, once we hit that 250, that doesn't mean that we can't get up to 260 or 280 or 300. But we put 250 because the city and Mohegan Sun felt as though, we're not sure we could even fill those, you know? So we used a number that they, you know, we didn't just want to put these numbers in to make it look nice. We want to be able to accomplish these goals, as does Mohegan Sun. So when you start thinking about 250 construction jobs, these are tradespeople that have to have specific skills. That's 250. Not every tradesperson in the city is going to want to work on this project. They're going to have other things they're going to be working on possibly. So, but if there are people that want to go to work, we're going to see to it that they are put to work. Once it's completed, 20% of all the permanent jobs will go to Revere residents. We felt that was a realistic number in a city of 55,000 people. 20% of 4,000 jobs, that's 800 jobs that people will have absolute, complete access to as a minimum. So again, if people want to, you know, let's say that, you know, we've got the 800 requisite number of jobs. People are already working. There's another 100 people in Revere that want to go to work. 100 people in Revere that want to go to work, Mohegan Sun is not going to say, "Oh, no, you've already hit the 800 number." Okay? I mean, their goal is to be a true partner to the city of Revere, and that's what they're going to be. We also, and we've talked about this as being a regional project, for those of you, you know, that, that, you know, were able to make or saw the, the press conference we had with some surrounding communities who support our efforts here in Revere to building, you know, this new entertainment complex, Salem, Chelsea, Saugus, Lynn, they all stood side by side with Revere to support this project, because they know, like I know, and I'm sure you know, that this is a true regional project. And I want this to be a regional project. I want this to have benefits for Winthrop, for East Boston, for, for Lynn, you know, on and on, you know, for Chelsea. I want this to have a regional impact, and it will, with respect to traffic and with respect to jobs. 75% of all permanent jobs are going to go to residents that live within a 15-mile radius of the city of Revere. So, we purposely put that in this agreement so that this will benefit our neighbors that we've worked closely with in many other ways over, over many, many years. Like to move on now to local purchasing. Mohegan Sun is going to be holding vendor forums, and they'll be coming up over the next couple of months. And they, we are requiring them to spend a minimum of $10 million on Revere businesses. We have a very active and vibrant business, local business economy here in the city. We've got a very active and renewed Chamber of Commerce that, you know, is really ramping up and really been a great help in promoting this project at Suffolk Downs. And, and it can only benefit our city if we support local business. And so, we're asking Mohegan Sun to spend $10 million a year in our local economy. And what, you know, that obviously is going to help those businesses, it's going to help those businesses expand and grow and presumably hire more people. So, it's not just the jobs we're talking about at Mohegan Sun, it's going to be jobs that we're going to create right here in the city of Revere that's going to help our existing businesses, or maybe, who knows, new businesses that may crop up, people that come up with an idea, "Hey, you know, maybe I've got a service or I've got goods that I can sell to this facility, you know, as a Revere resident, and, you know, this could be helpful to me." So, so that could, that could absolutely happen. In keeping with the spirit of wanting to help our regional friends and neighbors, we're requiring Mohegan Sun spend $50 million annually on businesses within a 15-mile radius. So, again, it's using that same logic. We want to help our neighbors again in Winthrop, Chelsea, Lynn, Salem, you know, the general geographic area, the North Shore area, we want to be able to help businesses by virtue of this project. So, $50 million as a minimum is going to be required to be spent in these, in our local Just very, very briefly, I want to talk about the community improvement projects. We talked about this earlier. They're going to help us complete our Harry Delarussos Stadium, that's going to be breaking ground, I believe, in February. Another million dollars toward a youth center that I think would really benefit the youth of our community. And a $250,000 annual grant for the purpose of promoting economic development in the city of Revere. That can go, that's kind of open-ended, that can go to helping existing businesses, maybe with a signage, a storefront improvement program, maybe we can set up something in terms of a small business, you know, small, small business loan to people to be able to expand or grow their businesses. But again, it's going to be an annual grant that's going to be given to the city so that we can assist local businesses, help sustain themselves, and hopefully grow. Reopener provisions. There's certain provisions, there's certain things that will occur along the way that will allow for a reopener, okay? And I'll just go over very, very briefly what they are. If Mohegan Sun proposes a substantial modification on or off the current site, or if there's any type of reduction in the size of the project, that would call for a reopener. If the city believes that the transportation impacts, like I mentioned before, have not been sufficiently mitigated. If state or municipal agencies require changes to the transportation improvements. And any regulations of the Gaming Commission that require additional terms that must be added to our host community agreement. So, there's certain, there's certain reopener provisions that, that, you know, will allow us or require us to reopen the host community agreement. I, I, I think lastly, I just want to talk about the public outreach process. It's something we did the last time, and in all honesty, I'm going to be coming to you, members of the council, to ask for your assistance this time around. And that's the public outreach process. We really need to get out and do all we can to educate the public as to the terms of this agreement and what this project means going forward for, for the future viability and success of our community. It's, I can't overstate what this means to the city going forward. This is our, really, our one opportunity at a project like this. There's no other project that's ever going to come into our city that's going to be governed in a way that's going to allow us to have any type of a host community agreement. We'll be able to tax them, of course, you know, but this gives us the ability to reach revenue numbers and create jobs in a way that not, no other project could, at least none that I can think of off the top of my head. So, we're going to be doing a lot of public outreach. A couple of dates that you may want to keep in mind, they'll both take place here in the city council chambers. The first one is going to be Wednesday, January 8th at 7:00 PM. That's again Wednesday, January 8th at 7:00 PM here in the city council chambers. And then, the next one is going to be Saturday, February 1st at 11:00 AM. So, that will give people who maybe can't make it during the week, they can have a chance to come here on a Saturday morning at 11:00 AM. Again, that's February 1st here in the council chambers. In the meantime, we will be moving street to street, house to house, neighbor to neighbor, friend to friend, to pass on the work, to pass on the terms of this host community agreement that, you know, we believe, at least those of you that I've talked to and people I've talked to, will be extremely well-received throughout our city. You know, we, we, maybe it's because we've had two tracks for decades here in our city, but we, we welcome a project like this. We, we recognize the benefits that it's going to bring and the jobs it's going to create and the revenue stream that we're going to be able to sustain our community, literally, probably, for decades. So, with that, Mr. President, I will open it up to questions. I have very capable people here behind me that can answer questions that members of the council may have, comments. We're open to all of that. I know that we have representation here from Mohegan Sun and Suffolk Downs, so if they can answer any questions, I'm sure they'd be willing to as well. And we've got legal representation here for any legal questions that you might have. So, I want to thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity to once again present the terms of this new host community agreement. But, you know, it's a situation we never could have planned for, but it, it has opened doors that, that if, if things go well and, and things go our way, we can, we can save the 1,000 jobs that already exist at Suffolk Downs and create 4,000 more jobs that people in the city I know desperately need. So, thank you very much for allowing me to review these terms with you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just before I open it up to the councils and anybody from the public, just want to, just a couple guidelines. Number one, the main reason we're here today is to set the date, okay? And that's what the communication is. So, any comments that you make, please make that in Part A when you discuss it before you get into the agreement, because that's kind of secondary in realizing, we don't have to approve this agreement, okay? This is something that the mayor has done, it's already signed, we can make comments on it. And so, and I know Council Zambudo has a late motion in, which we can bring up, but this is not an approval, so we can't say yea or nay for the agreement. If we want to, you know, under the other motion that's on here, that's whatever the councils want to do. But I would hope that you do Part A, Part B, then talk about the dates, because I know some of the guys and folks here have some comments on the, on the date. So, I'll, I hope that you can use those guidelines and realizing that we don't want to be here all day, so, you know, try and keep your, you know, comments to the subjects, please, and we can move on. So, first of all, I'm going to call on Councilor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the opportunity for the city of Revere to vote on this on February 25th is without question a tremendous move forward. I think the group did a tremendous job. There's nothing that I believe has been forgotten. If there's one thing I would like to see added to it, it'll be on, on page three, under the $1 million for the Revere School Committee and $2 million each for the Fire and Police Station, is another bullet that says, "And tax relief." That's what the taxpayers want. They want to get tax relief, and as long as we can get that message out, this is all great stuff, but they want tax relief. And I think if you put that in there, in a bullet or whatever it may be, I believe it would be easier to sell the project. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Gwinassel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I looked at the calendar earlier going forward. I saw February 25th as a Sunday. It's, I thought Tuesday, February 27th. Is that correct? 25th is a Tuesday? Oh, then, then let's go, let's go, let's vote.
Councilor, I think you were checking the Hebrew calendar.
Could have been. The only thing I can suggest and say to our community, and I'm prefacing my comments to anybody who's watching tonight, today, this is an unbelievable opportunity for our city. This is one that, you know, you can't look a gift horse in the mouth, per se, that's a pun. And so, to me, I just suggest to everybody out there, put aside your personal feelings for gaming and stuff and whatever that might be. And again, I go crazy when people talk about people who go to a gaming institution as a, as not a desirable person. I know quite a few grandmothers, grandfathers, aunts, uncles, that are very, very nice people to go to these places. I just think that, given the opportunity, and being blessed by my constituents for so many years, allowing me to serve in this capacity I do, this is a golden opportunity for all of us. Each and every one of us in our community is going to benefit in some way. This is the golden opportunity that we've been waiting for our whole lives. And given this opportunity, the only thing I can say to you, and I'm saying it as openly as I possibly could, please work with us on this project. Make sure that we come together and make sure that, once this happens, we look down the road so many years forward and say, "Wow, what were we ever thinking about? This was the greatest opportunity the city's ever had. What was the question about? There's no question in my mind. I would not sell anything I didn't believe that I would buy myself. I'm buying into this project. I think it's an unbelievable event." And I look forward to the many, many years of Mohegan Sun and the city of Revere and Revere Beach coming back to life and putting a, a certain stimulus into our area that's so well-deserved and so long-forgotten. I just think that we have an opportunity now to show the, the rest of our state what we think of this project, and I would like to see a percentage of 90% or better for this golden opportunity. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, this has been a long process, and we're coming to probably what I call the 11th hour of an election, and then the commission makes its final decision. But, you know, people say, "Why the 25th of February?" That's where we're at with this. We have to have a date. The commission is looking for things to be done in an expeditious manner. So, the 25th, you know, and the only thing that scares me, I want people to know out there firsthand, Councilor Gwinassel said it right, this means a lot to the city. I mean, the wow factor in years to come, we have a chance that people come to Revere and say, "Wow." I mean, that wow factor, when people build things, they look to have that wow factor when you open the doors. And I'm sure when you open the doors of Mohegan Sun, it's the wow factor. But you know what's better than that? When you come to Revere, the gateway is to Revere, you're going to say, "Wow. Wow, what a city they have." The other thing is, the 25th, the election doesn't scare me, what scares me is, who knows, we don't have a crystal ball here today to say the weather is going to be like today. You could have a blizzard out there, you don't know what you're going to have. But I think it's up to the Election Commission, Mohegan Sun, Suffolk, and this city council, and the mayor, to let people know you can vote absentee ballot. You know, so, I mean, every vote is going to count. Let's remember, all you do is fill a piece of paper, or call me, I'll bring it to your house. Call anybody in the city, they'll bring it to you. They'll mail it to you. So, with that being said, there's no excuse for nobody to go out there to vote. And you have one opportunity at this, and it's February 25th. I think that date is the most crucial date in this city's history, to say that we overwhelmingly want the wow factor for city of Revere. The only other thing I'll make, Mr. President, because the mayor did a great job, is let the people vote on the merits of it. His team did a great job. They worked hard, they worked overnight, relentless, relentless to put this agreement together, which is the best in the Commonwealth. Just wanted to say, one other point, do not let people from outside the city come in here and extort the truth to the people, because you're going to have it. I actually feel for the people of Revere, that Revere will become ground zero over the next two months. They deserve better. They deserve to vote on the merits only, not on the naysayers, that just don't want it. And they're not even from Revere. So, let Revere people vote their conscience, let them vote on the merits of this, because if you read it, you understand it, there's no other vote to vote against. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank the mayor and his, his negotiation team and Mohegan Sun and Suffolk Downs for this opportunity for the city of Revere. First of all, I, on what the point that Councilor Haas brought up about tax relief, actually in the mayor's office when we were first in separate groups, first time viewing this agreement, I suggested that one of the key elements be tax relief and water, water relief. And I was told by the good attorneys that are working on this agreement that the DOC would, would not allow them to put it in, put it in writing. And my colleague, Councilor Rego, who has some expertise in this matter, working at the State House, he agreed with the attorney. the State House, he agreed with the attorneys, that they couldn't put it in writing. But I know every time that the mayor has spoke so far, that I've heard him, he's always mentioned tax relief for the people of Revere. So, and I, as, and I, I give my constituents my word that if hopefully this goes through, and we're granted this, an agreement, that I'll do everything I can to, to make sure that we get the tax relief, and hopefully the water relief. I also want to, I wanted to say that the, you know, I, I just, this is a one-time opportunity for the City of Revere. It's never going to happen again. And 60% of the people voted on an agreement that I thought was a very good agreement with Suffolk at the beginning. People, there were people that disagreed on that, and they had a right to do so, but I always stressed that we only had, you know, at the time, we only had the bonds in the, in the parking lot. But that was a pretty good agree, that was a pretty good settlement for us, the City of Revere, as a whole, whole agreement. And I just wanted to say that if we could get, if 60% of the people believed, like I, I did, that it was a pretty good deal, that I, I can't find anything better than 80, 90% of the people, if they really take the opportunity to read this agreement, they'll know, they'll come and vote for it, and, and we, we really should, I hope they do, because we want to show that we have a good vote, so we can show the Mass Gaming Commission that we really want it. I also want to stress the other issue that Councilor Penta brought up. They're already farming all over the state here to come to Revere. People that, for their own reasons, are against gaming, and they're going to come to Revere. So, that's why the people of Revere are going to be well-aware that they are the people of choice here. This is our choice, the citizens of Revere. So, try to, you know, try to avoid, let them have their discussions, but try not to get any confrontations with them, and, and just let, just go on what you read on this agreement and vote yes for it. We, this is a great opportunity for the city. And I just want to, again, thanks to all the parties involved, and hopefully, we vote on, we vote big, we will vote big for it, and then hopefully the Gaming Commission will give, grant it to us. But if not, it wasn't, we did all we could do in this city, and it wasn't us that turned it away. And I think that's, that would be, that'd be a lot easier to live on in the future years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Rego.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, it's no secret that I've been critical of the previous agreement, and, you know, I thought that some of the, the opportunity that we had to, to negotiate a, a real game changer for the city was, I was a little disappointed by the amount of money that we were talking about. I cannot say that about this agreement. I want to commend the mayor, John Festa, Frank, Brian, George, for you guys' work. This is impressive agreement, and I hope that means a lot coming from me, because I know that I'm pretty critical, and I, it's only because I want what's best for the city. And I know that everyone wants what's best for the city. I do have high standards for myself, I have high standards for, for this administration. And I, I cannot be happier about the agreement that we have here for us. I really am impressed by the work that's been done. The amount of money that we're talking about is, is going to make the city a world-class city. I truly believe that. And it gives the city the ability to do things that we probably could never imagine. So, it really is a game changer for, for the city. And I, I do want to just preface everything by saying, this is a little bit like hitting the lottery, to a certain extent. And unfortunately, there are countless stories of people who go broke after hitting the lottery. So, I want everyone to keep in the back of their mind that, you know, the, the money isn't endless, and that if we do get to a point where this becomes a reality, we need to start, I would hope that we would keep intact the ordinance that's in place now that says that half of gaming revenue would go into the stabilization fund, and I would hope that folks would just think about, rather than think about their wish list, think about the, the financial stability of the, of the city in the future, in the next, you know, 20, 30, 100 years. We have an opportunity to really become, as I said, a world-class city. I think this could be, this is a great agreement, and, and I look forward to, to being a cheerleader, because I was not a cheerleader the last time, and I have no qualms about saying that, because I didn't feel I can't do what I, I don't believe in. And I, I was critical of the last agreement, and, but I look forward to making sure that the people of Revere understand every, every detail of this, and make sure that they can appreciate the hard work that you've done to make this a reality. And, and I really do appreciate it. And, you know, my, my words are, they come from the heart, and, and they're not, it's not BS, and I can't, I'm not very good at BSing people. So, I do appreciate the work that's been done on, on behalf of the entire city, and I'd like to congratulate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the outset, let me say that I want to congratulate the mayor, John Festa, and all of the other individuals that are involved in bringing our position where it is today to this point. You know, there are going to be people coming into the city in the next seven or eight weeks, they're going to be talking about traffic, it's a moral issue, it's this, it's that. It's not a moral issue. We've had a Wonderland Park in this city for 70-some-odd years. We have 7,000 locations throughout the Commonwealth where people, where gaming is far more accessible than a casino at Suffolk Downs would be. You could buy a scratch ticket when you go out to get a gallon of milk, you know, a loaf of bread, far more accessible. So, that issue is out the, out the window. What this is, it's a quality of life issue for the residents that live in this city. I get calls every day from people that want to know why they can't get their street paved, why they can't get a sidewalk put in, why they can't get a tree taken down, why we don't have certain programs in the school system, why we don't have enough police on the street, why the Point of Pines fire station is closed. And it all boils down to one thing, dollars. That's what it all boils down to. I know the mayor would like to provide all these services, and I feel every member of the city council would also like to provide those services, but without the money, you can't. What does this mean to the city? For one thing, it means stabilizing taxes to some degree, and also stabilizing ever-rising water and sewer rates, that sometimes, at some point, may go beyond what the tax bill is. And we have to, we, that's something we don't want to see happen. It means putting more police out on the street, public safety. And above that, it means providing more services for all individuals in the city, including our senior citizens, people that need a ride here, a ride there, other services like that that we can provide. You know, I worked at Wonderland Park many, many years ago, selling programs. It was an opportunity for me to put a few dollars in my pocket when I went to school, so I'd have a little money to buy this or buy that, or go on a trip here and do this or that. Services that my family couldn't provide at that time. This means providing jobs for people in this city. You can go to your union halls every day, and you'll find men sitting there, capable people who can provide a service to the community, but there's no money to hire these people. There's no money to put these projects out there. This is, this is a golden opportunity for this city. Nothing like this will ever come along again. Not only will the project itself mean a lot to this city, but it's going to spur development. Apostle H., Shaw's site, the Boulevard, all of the properties in this city, and development that we want. What kind of development we want? We want businesses. We want hotels, hotels that provide a 6% room excise tax to this city, restaurants that provide a 0.75% tax to this city, revenue coming in. This is a golden opportunity. As I said before, it's a golden revenue stream. And I urge everyone in this city to go out and support this on, on February 25th. And as Councilor Penta mentioned, if you're going on vacation, you may be in Florida, get an absentee ballot. I'm sure those ballots will be ready very soon. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Powers. Councilor Corregio.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first thing is, I want to commend Dan Rizzo, John Festa, his entire staff. They've been working day and night with this. It's really a win-win for the City of Revere. I've been with this from the beginning. I helped up at the State House to try to get a bill passed to get gaming on, on the books. What Revere is going to be getting is really a tremendous package. The first thing, as I go to coffee shops every day, people are concerned about taxes and water rates. And I told them, I will do what I can to get the information to the, to the team, and we are addressing it. Everybody is going to gain in the City of Revere from, from this. And public safety, we're going to get additional fire stations open. Myself being in public safety, more firefighters on the job, more police officers we can put on the beat, Shirley Avenue and Broadway, more sector cars to be able to respond to emergency services in the various districts, union jobs, which is most important, saving the jobs at Suffolk Downs, keeping those guys working, and adding on additional jobs, jobs that are permanently going to be in the casino, road and sidewalk reconstruction to all neighborhoods. This is something that it's very difficult to do, because funds are very limited. I'm speaking from the heart, this is a tremendous, tremendous package. Everybody's going to gain, and I, I'll be supporting it, and I take my hat out to the Rizzo administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Corregio. Councilor Riden.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I endorse pretty much what my brothers on the city council have said, and I don't really feel the need to be redundant. I will make a couple of points. First of all, the mayor and his team need to be congratulated from everybody for creating an outstanding, the mayor and also the folks at Suffolk Downs, when you get an agreement together, it takes more than just one side. But this is an outstandingly equitable and advantageous agreement for the City of Revere, so I support you all. As far as what we're here for tonight, or today, which is to establish the vote for acceptance of this agreement and acceptance of the proposal in general, it's very difficult for me, looking at this agreement versus what the prior agreement was, to imagine that those who supported it would not be every bit as supportive. I would ask that those who did not support it in the first place take a look at, a hard look at this agreement and, by comparison. But I would also ask that they consider that, and the mayor touched on this, that what we're talking about here is not the establishment of a new industry or a new way for people to either spend their money or make money. This is a revitalization of an industry that's been part of Revere for the last 80 or so years at this point, probably earlier than that, I'm not sure when Wonderland was established. But we need to remember that, you know, 60 years ago, 10,000 cars on a Saturday in Revere was nothing. There were, there was hardly anybody who lived in the City of Revere who didn't either work at Suffolk Downs Wonderland, was related to someone who worked at either Suffolk Downs or Wonderland, or knew someone that worked at Suffolk Downs or Wonderland. This was our industry. We had no other industry. It fell on hard times, no doubt about it, it certainly has. This is a tremendous revitalization of an industry that is endemic to the City of Revere, that is very familiar with the City of Revere, that we've historically embraced. So, look at it, looking at it from that point of view, we're, we're bringing something back that's been, and just much as Detroit brought, brought back the auto industry, it's, we're, we're working on the same principles here. My, the thing that I think is most important to emphasize, and the mayor again touched on this, is the revitalization of Revere Beach also. This was another area that in the past has been, was a tremendous, if you see all the old pictures that we have of Revere Beach when there wasn't a spot on the sand to be had on a summer afternoon, on a Sunday afternoon in summer. This is a revitalization of that aspect of Revere's face as well. And I'm most looking forward, assuming that we are successful at, in getting the Gaming Commission's approval, at seeing the revitalization of the, of the Revere, the building of other areas, other industries in Revere, the hotel industry in particular. And if you look at it that way, it may be someday that the mitigation agreement will, will, I shouldn't say pale in comparison, but it will be held in a comparative way to what was the result of this establishment, of this, this re-establishment of this industry in Revere. So, I look wholeheartedly forward to voting on this in a few minutes, Mr. President, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
You're welcome, Councilor, and thank you. Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are benefits and there are pitfalls of being the last to speak, especially on an issue like this. My colleagues ate up a lot of what was to be said. Of course, my colleague to my right doesn't want to be redundant, I've been accused of that occasionally, and I will be. I'll start off by congratulating the mayor and his team, and I won't name everybody, because I might forget somebody. But I will also congratulate Mohegan Sun and Suffolk Downs for what I think is a wonderful agreement for all of us. And it's a partnership that we're entering into here, the City of Revere, Mohegan Sun, Suffolk Downs, it's a, it's a true partnership, and we all want to succeed. The mayor said at the, at the signing of the agreement a couple of days ago, and unfortunately some of it wasn't captured, or the people that were watching, the local people, didn't get to hear what he said. But one of the most important things he said was this agreement, and this casino at Mohegan Sun at Suffolk Downs, or I like to call it the Resort Casino at Revere Beach, but we'll leave that for another day, is transformational, transformational for the City of Revere. I don't think people understand the magnitude of what's to come if we're successful with the Gaming Commission, the, the benefits. Now, we talked about tax relief and water and sewer relief, and I'll say publicly here that, and, and my colleague is correct, that it couldn't be put in the agreement, but I will fight for that, and I promise you that there will be tax relief and sewer relief with this agreement. But most importantly is the economic development that this will generate. I know that our economic developments are, as I like to call them, John Fester is excited about this because of what this will. This will bring hotels to Revere Beach, this will bring Revere Beach back. And, 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 you know, we're known, when, when I go, I travel a lot, and everybody knows, I, I show dogs, and I go all around the country, and when I tell people I'm from Revere, they, they, they just give me a blank stare, and I, and when I tell them, do you know that Revere Beach is America's first public beach? Nobody knows that, but everybody's going to know it soon. The good news is, is that when my colleague to my right, Councilor Rego, and we don't usually mention each other's name, but when he steals my cheerleader, I used to be the cheerleader of this agreement, when he takes that, and I think any of you who voted against this or... this or grabbed reservations about the first host community agreement cannot have any doubts that this is the best thing. This is great for our children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren. It's truly transformational and it, it, it's going to affect generations to come in Revere. So I urge everybody to look this agreement over and, and don't listen to the people that are coming, are going to come here from other cities and towns with other agendas. We're going to have every anti-casino person from across the country flooding Revere to try to convince us that we don't know what we're talking about. The agreement is right here. This agreement tells the whole story and, and, and it is a great thing for Revere, and I think my colleague from Wartree said this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. This is, this is truly a once-in-a-lifetime. We'll never have this kind of opportunity to, to really bring Revere to a world-class city, and this is it. So I urge everybody out there watching this to, to look over this agreement and support us on February 25th, because this is truly the future of a wonderful Revere. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. And you're not the last speaker.
That, that is correct. I know this is your last, your last official act as president, so.
Well, that, that's not necessarily so.
Oh, you might have another meeting. You might have another meeting.
Anyway, I thank everybody for their cooperation and, you know, keeping to the subject and having a lot of brevity, because sometimes in the council here, that's, that's tough to do.
Why are you looking at me?
Because you're the one. But, but believe it or not, I do have some questions, you know, and I want to make them public, as, you know, I want you to clarify, Mr. Mayor, some of the issues that I want to bring up, that the people, you know, will be able to bring up when we have these two meetings that are scheduled on January 8th and February 1st. First of all, on the variable years, you mentioned the 25 million and the 40 million. Now, is that per year or is that for that group of years? You know, like, if you know what I'm?
Right. So, so the minimum for the first three years is going to be 25 million. That's going to be the minimum. Now, as I mentioned before, there's formulas that are built into the host community agreement that, for example, if they hit a billion in year two, for example, then the higher number would apply, which would be in that case $40 million. The minimum we're going to get in those first three years will be 25 million. That's years one, two, and three. Years four, five, and six, the minimum is going to be 28 million. And again, the same math applies. If they do a billion or more in years five, you know, four, five, or six, the higher number is going to apply. So the minimum the city is going to receive will be 28 million. Year seven and beyond, it's going to be 30 million. And that will stay as a minimum forever. The 30 million will become the new floor. But again, by that time, the hope is that they'll be ramped up and that that number won't even be in play.
Right. The question, on the first year, they're not going to say they don't make the billion. We'll get 25 million. The second year, if they do hit the billion, we'll get 40 million. Now, on the third year, if that percentage goes down to, say, 750 million or lower, we won't get the 40, but we'll, we get in between, we won't get the 25 or 40, but in, in the middle.
Well, no, you, well, yeah, like, there's a formula, and, you know, it was too much to go over here for the synopsis, but within the host community agreement, there is a, that there is a formula breakdown that, that, you know, once you go over, I think it's 857 million, John, is it?
850, yeah.
850 million? Okay. I think, okay, yeah, so over 850 million is where the percentages start to kick in, above and beyond.
So that would be in the, it wouldn't be the same every year for the?
Yeah, I mean, it could be. It doesn't have to be, in other words, if it's less than, let's say it's 900 million, you know, we'd be looking at 36 million instead of 40.
Right.
Or somewhere abouts.
Understood. Thank you. Now, as far as the, the work jobs that we're talking about, are there going to be any reporting requirements on a regular basis to the city from Mohegan?
Yeah, well, we've, we have in place right now a Revere resident monitoring committee.
That was my sex, second part of the question.
Yes, yes. They will be very actively involved in working with Mohegan Sun to determine the number of jobs Revere residents that, that are currently active, both during the construction phase and in the permanent jobs phase.
Excellent. Thank you. And one of the, not the last ones, but another issue was the traffic, which everybody knows that I'm very involved in. And I know we are talking about Harris Street, Revere Beach Parkway intersection, about redesigning that and redoing some work there, but I know Mass DOT is working on the bridge, and I want to know how much connection that bridge or Mass DOT will take away from the amount of work that Mohegan or Suffolk has to do within that intersection. I don't know if that, is that at that point?
Mr. President, I think I'll defer to Frank Strangie for that question, okay? Frank, do you want to maybe, maybe answer that?
Thank you.
Yeah, the bridge reconstruction is a separate project undertaken by Mass DOT. That project will be undertaken in 2014 and finished by the time the casino opens and by the time the improvements to Harris Street, Revere Beach Parkway, Route 16 is started. But the scope of work on the bridge, it's just, it's just confined to the bridge itself. It's not going to affect the intersection at all. Okay?
Good. And the other issue that I, and everybody knows I have, is that Noshar Road and Tommascello Drive scenario, which affects my ward directly. And I know all the people are looking forward to a correction of what's, from what's there now, so.
Yeah, there'll be substantial improvements at that intersection. We'll be muted with you next week with our traffic engineers to go over the various alternatives. And each one of the alternatives involve improving traffic flow and, and signal phasing there and the timing of those signals to make that intersection more efficient.
Cool. Thank you. And now, Mr. Mayor, and Public Works. I know you mentioned that a little and it was, and I know it's a, it's a large pot that we have to deal with. And I know our Public Works facility and the staffing at Public Works is so decimated, you know, and that's one of the reasons we can't get a lot of the work done from, you know, and this isn't a negative towards any of the workers, but it's just the, you know, it's something that we as the council have to approve. I know I have a motion in coming up, the first meeting in January, to ask you to increase the Public Works staffing in the next budget. I know a lot has to do with what we're dealing with, but I think it's imperative that even if we don't get it, we have to get some additional bodies down there. You know, capable bodies that, you know, that will help do some of the projects that we're looking for to get done. And I know their facility that they have down there is atrocious, to say the least. I'm surprised that it hasn't been condemned as yet. We're in the same scenario with our Public Works Department as we were with the Police Department when the building was next door to us. Terrible.
Yeah, okay, so, so there's two different issues. One has to do with manpower, and as I mentioned in the agreement, we have one of our line items that we identified for the edification of the Gaming Commission was $1 million toward general government. And within that number is definitely, we have allocated money that we believe, I mean, obviously subject to council approval, but we believe that we'll be able to add some manpower down at the city yard for sure. With respect to a new facility, Councilor Arigo had talked about the ordinance that's in place where 50% of all revenue is generated as a result of enhanced gaming goes into a capital improvement fund, which will be presumably set up to, to address the capital needs of the city. And certainly one of those is a new DPW facility. I don't think there's any question that they need, I mean, I know the superintendent told me they lost another computer last week as a result of a rainstorm. You know, the roof is completely gone. It's, it's in complete disrepair. And now it just comes down to, you know, prioritizing and allocating money that the city has. You know, we don't, you know, we, you know, I don't think anybody would, you know, would confuse me with being someone who's shy about spending money on capital projects that I believe the city needs. I mean, I think, I think that's important to the future of our city, but I certainly can't spend money that we don't have. And this will, no doubt, create a revenue stream that I'll be able, and with the help of the city council, to attack some of these problems that we have. Somebody mentioned senior services. I think Councilor Powers had talked about senior services. I mean, we just had a van donated to us, thankfully, by East Boston Neighborhood Health Center. We, you know, it was difficult for us to figure out how we're going to buy a shuttle van, just one shuttle van for our seniors. And, and thankfully, those numbers are up down at the senior center now, and ridership is up to the point where he's talking about wanting a second shuttle van. But again, I can't commit to that right now, because that, not only is it a second van that the city would have to either go and find through another donor like East Boston Neighborhood Health, or, or, or have to go out and purchase, but now you've got to hire another driver too. So, you know, but these are needs that, again, we'll be able to collectively, together, address if this does come to fruition.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I do want to say that, you know, I agree with everything that everybody has said today. There's no sense of repeating it. As Councilor Zambudo stated, we do agree with what's going on here. And I do, again, congratulate you and your staff and Mohegan and Suffolk for their cooperation and working as a team. It's not only a partnership, this is a team, this teamwork that we're, we're dealing with here. You know, between the city council and yourself, your team and the Mohegan team and the Suffolk team. It, it's just unbelievable and like people said, this is a once-in-a-lifetime deal. We have, we have to go for it and we have to push everything we can. Revere has been an entertainment city for numerous, numerous years, having the old frolic here and having the old surf here. You know, people like Tody Fields coming into Revere and Barbara Streisand and Jerry Vale, those are the type of entertainment, and we're going to get that stuff back. I'm not saying Madonna's going to come back to, you know, Mohegan or anything like that, but you, you never know, but we're going to get high-class entertainment here again. And I look forward to that. Like I was just stated before, gambling's been here for many, many moons, you know, and that's, hopefully will continue at, at a higher level. I, I look forward to that.
Mr. President, if I could add, I mean, if you remember back in 1966, the Beatles played at Suffolk Downs. So, you know, you're 100% right. This, this, this has been, you know, an entertainment and a source of regional, and now probably, given this new facility, probably national and international source of recreation for people. And, and so, you know, it's a very, very exciting time. And as Mitch Edes said, you know, this is a true home team. We've got the city of Revere, Suffolk Downs, who's been here a neighbor for 80 years, and Mohegan Sun, a New England-based wildly successful gaming partner. So we really, I think we're poised to, to, to really not only make the city of Revere proud and the Gaming Commission proud, this is going to be something that is going to transcend all of us that are here right now. This, this will be generational. And, and if we work together and we are successful on February 25th, I'm extremely confident that we're going to put together a first-class application for the Gaming Commission. If I could, I know John Festa wanted to add a couple of things, Mr. President, if it's okay with you, if I, if he just said a few words.
Just let me finish my, my thing and I'll let him come up. And you, you gave me a good segue into the vote, February 25th, and it was mentioned that we're talking about a lot of folks not being able to get out because of the cold weather, people gone to Florida that could vote, and we're talking absentee voting. Now, what people are going to get first are absentee ballot applications, and that's what we want folks to get. I think you get, you can get them online at the Secretary of State's Office website. And we want everybody to push that, all our councilors, to reach out to their ward people, to their campaign folks, to their people they know, to get out and get absentee ballots if they can't get out to vote. Now, as was mentioned to me a little earlier by Councilor Patch, even before February 25th, you are able to vote and do an early vote here at City Hall. You know, I think it's like maybe one or two weeks before the actual vote, depending on when the ballots are ready. But I'm sure that'll be announced by the Election Department when the time comes. You will be able to do an early vote to save yourself on that particular day. So just a note for that, and I thank Councilor Patch for that. I, I just ask people, as I have been rooting, you know, cheerleading for this right along, vote, 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 absentee balloting, but I want to remind everybody involved, we have a sign ordinance. I know this was a big, big thing in the last election about signs. I know there were a lot of our own signs out there, and there were also the referendum signs. We do have a sign ordinance that everybody must adhere to, okay? And I would ask that both parties, no matter who it is, the yeses or the noes, abide by that ordinance. And I would ask, hopefully, that the Inspection Services Department go out and af, go after these folks that don't have the proper sign out there to make sure it comes down. I don't want our city to look the same way as it looked before. So with that, and I would ask that we, we talk about Paul Revere, we have Paul Revere's right above us in the ceiling, and I would ask everybody to note that casinos are coming, casinos are coming, casinos are coming. So with that, Mr. Festa.
Eric, could I just make one point of information before?
Go ahead, Councilor Patch.
It's, thank you for, I did mention that to you about the, the voting at City Hall. I just, I just want to make it for the citizens out there that I did it my, there is a voting booth that's actually set up in the election office. And if, if anybody out there is afraid, won't vote because they're going to be, they're going to be afraid of the people holding the signs or don't want the hassle of going to a voting place that, because I foresee there might be some difficulty there. It's nothing, I did it once when I went on vacation. You just go right, right in the election office, there's a booth there, it's a lot of privacy, you just go in and you vote. It's a very good way to vote. So anybody that, that decided that they ain't going to vote, ain't going to put up with the, the hassle of going to the voting place, it, it's a good idea to vote at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Mr. Festa.
Mr. President, members of the council, I want to thank you for having us here today. Very proud of, of this package, obviously. And I just want to make two points. First is, you know, we were very, very aggressive in terms of our minimums, and that was done purposely. And second, we really believe that we're not even going to get the minimums. We feel that we're going to be even better than that. And your question pertaining to how is it, how is it increased, it's based upon minimums of 25 million, but then there's percentages that grow with that depending on the revenue stream. So we're going, we really believe in our heart that those minimums, obviously, are worst-case scenarios, but we feel that by, after year one, that those minimums will increase substantially of what we actually will receive. So I wanted to make that point. Number two is, I think the message is very loud and clear from all of, all the city councils that property tax relief and water sewer relief is a, is a key ingredient. And I can assure you that in our discussions, Mayor Rizzo has stated emphatically that that's one of his top priorities. So when we were negotiating this, if this ever becomes a reality, we really believe that we will be able to stabilize or reduce taxes and water and sewer relief. That's a clear message that is from yourselves, from the dishonorable body, and from the citizens of Revere. I get calls all the time, and I know that the mayor is very much concerned about that, and that's a, that's a top priority. So I just wanted to relay that message, because we talk about that a lot and we're sincere about it. And if we get this, and when we get it, I should say, we're very much going to look closely to, to reduce the taxes, okay?
Thank you, my friend. As I said before, I am going to open it up to residents that may want to make some comments a minute or so. Mr. Chaloni.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Louis Chaloni. I reside at 410 Park Avenue in Revere. I'm president and business manager of IBW Local 123, which represents the vast majority of the unionized workforce at Suffolk Downs. I want to thank Mohegan Sun and Suffolk Downs and Chip Tuttle for their efforts to save the jobs of the people I represent and to create more jobs. But I most especially want to thank Mayor Dan Rizzo for his act, that the access he allowed me to have to him during this discussion. It's a great agreement, speaking as a homeowner in the city of Revere and as a resident. It's a great agreement, speaking as a homeowner in the city of Revere and as a resident of the city, the agreement, and I've read every single page, and I told John Fester this morning, my favorite page is page 18. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And, but on the election itself, the way I like to frame the question of this referendum is that a yes vote is for jobs for the people of Revere, job preferences for people from the city of Revere, good unionized jobs at the city, for people from the city of Revere and the surrounding communities, and revenue for those of us who pay taxes in the city of Revere and those of us who reside in the city of Revere. A no vote is not against a casino, a no vote is a yes vote, that those same benefits go to Everett instead of to Revere. So, there's going to be a casino on our doorstep, it can be reside in Revere at Suffolk Downs location, Mohegan Sun on the area which is now Suffolk Downs, or it's going to be on our doorstep in which we don't get the same benefits and we don't get the same job preference. So, to the people out there, my fellow residents in the city of Revere, a yes vote is for us, a no vote is for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Louis. Is there anybody else who would like to make any comments from the audience? Well, hearing none, seeing none, I think at this time we move on to vote for the date of the election. Roll call.
That the city council hereby authorizes the scheduling and holding of a host community election on February 25th, 2014, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 23K, subsection 13 of section 15, and Mass Code of Regulations, Chapter 205, section 124.02, subsection 1, on a ballot question relative to the operation of a gaming establishment in Revere pursuant to a category-one gaming license issued by the Massachusetts Gaming Commission, having received a request for such an election from Mohegan Sun Massachusetts LLC. Councilor Arigo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Correggio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Gino is absent. Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Penta?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes, the election has been set.
Late motion, please.
Mr. President, reconsideration or prevail?
Suspension of rules, all in favor, all opposed, vote in so order. Suspension of rules, hoping that does not prevail. All in favor, all opposed, vote in so order. Back to regular order of business.
Late motion presented by Councilor Zambudo, that the Revere City Council hereby offers a vote of confidence to Mayor Rizzo regarding the host community agreement by and between the city of Revere and Mohegan Sun Massachusetts LLC.
Councilor Zambudo?
Now, thank you, Mr. President. I think the motion speaks for itself.
Thank you, Counselor, and the other councilors. Hearing none on the motion. All in favor, all opposed, vote in so order. Motion adjourned. We have a motion adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for your participation. Thank you to all who participated from the floor, and we move on. Motion adjourned, all in favor, all opposed, vote in so order. Happy New Year to all.